Welcome everyone to the St. Peter's School Board, regular school board meeting of Monday, March 21st, 2022. We are in the governor's room of the St. Peter Community Center and it is about 6:32. I will call this meeting to order and we'll rise through the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to consider and adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further consideration? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. If there is a request to speak to an agenda item, please fill out a card and get that to Sarah. With that, we will move to the approval of consent agenda items. It is our practice to not read all of the consent agenda out to the public, but there is a copy back there. And if there are certain items that we want to pull out for further consideration or just acknowledgement, we always do that, so.
Chair Leonard, I spoke with Mr. Regner and everything looks good.
Fantastic.
As far as the money goes.
Thank you.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we are at the student spotlight, the best part of the agenda. And I think we have Lonzo and Hadley to talk with us today.
Good evening. I'm so excited to bring the Spotlight students from South with me tonight. Again, it happened twice in one year, but I called the students down and I said, you know what? I asked teachers to nominate students that they think do a wonderful job of showing star pride, work hard, treat others kind. And Lonzo said, Mrs. Hooky, you should get my sister. And that was a similar line that was used when I brought the students in earlier in the year. So I think that really does say something about the kind of students that usually are nominated by the staff to come here. They, they think about not only themselves, but about others. So I have with me Ms. Hadley Yost, and she is an experienced first grader, right?
Yeah.
And she is the first grade daughter of Jacob and Jennifer Yost. And she has two sisters, Kyla and Jalen. And where are they tonight?
At my house doing chores.
And you got out of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so there's an advantage of being invited to the school board meeting too. And I have Lonzo Alvarez with me, and he is the son of Gerardo and Diana Alvarez. And he has two big sisters, Jimena and Sasha, right? And he is a kindergartner in Ms. Relard's room. And you're in whose classroom?
Mrs. Walters.
Mrs. Walters, first grade. I'd like to read just a couple of things that have been written about these students as they were nominated. So I'll read Hadley's words first. "Hadley is an enthusiastic learner with a spunky personality. She is always willing to help her peers and the adults in the building in any way that she can. She is full of life and gives 100% in everything that she does. She demonstrates kindness within the classroom and has a strong sense of compassion for others. She is a positive role model for them, and she wants to help others succeed as much as she wants to succeed herself. She can oftentimes be found complimenting a classmate and encouraging them to make good choices. She is happy and always wears a big smile." You better show him that smile. "She possesses many star pride student traits, and South Elementary is a better place because Hadley is a part of it." And now your turn, Lonzo. Would you like to hear what's been written about you? All right. "Lonzo has shared his kind heart and gift of empathy with those around him all year long. He includes others in play, works hard in everything that he does, and has a growth mindset when trying something new. Lonzo is a leader for his classmates through his actions, and he is always taking time to think of others. He will respectfully wait his turn while playing a game and congratulate others when they succeed. He enjoys giving peers compliments on their artwork and their Lego creations. He can genuinely build them up with his thoughtful words. Lonzo is the happiest when he can make others feel valued and appreciated. When Lonzo encounters a problem, he responds in a positive way. It allows him then to move forward and to keep learning. He was chosen as a Spotlight student for his dedication to showing star pride. He shows respect to all the adults in the building as well as to his peers. This produces a ripple effect around him. Others look to Lonzo and can see his star pride shining bright." That's all but right? Right. Okay, so I just have five questions that I asked him, so I'm going to let them give us the answers. So Hadley, what do you like to do when you're not in school?
Play with baby lambs.
And how many lambs do you have at your house?
Fifty-four, I think.
Whoa, fifty-four. So there's a lot of chores that our sisters are picking up for tonight. Do you have other animals as well?
Cows, cats, and chickens, and then we have a dog.
Wow. Just one dog?
Yep.
I thought maybe fifty-four. And what do you like to do when you're not in school, Lonzo?
Go outside.
We're gonna have you come way up here so they can hear. What do you like to do?
Go outside.
And what do you like to do when you're outside?
Play with my friends.
All right. And your favorite thing to play? Like to play ball or climb on things?
I like to climb on things.
Climb on things, oh, right. And what is your favorite thing to do in school? What do you like to learn about?
Math.
Math. And how about you?
Writing and money.
Ooh, likes learning about money. Are you collecting it? And what are some things you're learning about right now in first grade?
Books, what we read.
Okay, reading books. And how about you?
Money.
Learning how to count all that money that you have. And what's your favorite lunch?
Pasta sticks, one chicken, and then chicken patty.
Triple, perfecto right there. And how about you, Lonzo? What's your favorite lunch at school?
The pizza.
And when you grow up, what would you like to do, Hadley?
A doctor and a singer.
And tell me how you were gonna manage those two.
I would've been a doctor in the morning, and then I would've been a singer in the night.
Yeah, she said she liked singing in the dark. We'll work out perfect for her. And how about you, Lonzo? What would you like to do when you grow up?
Be a police officer.
I think they are off to a great future, and I'm sure that they can do whatever they want to. So thank you for representing South Elementary, and thank you for giving us some time to do that.
Thank you so much.
Lonzo, I have a question.
What?
When you get into seventh grade, are you gonna be like your big sister Sasha and do a history day project? She did a great job. Do you have her help you with that, okay? All right, good job. Thanks, Sasha.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, I wanna know, what was your favorite thing you did this year? Not just necessarily a subject, but maybe the way the teacher taught it, or a field trip you went on, or a fun game day you might've had? Or what was your favorite thing you've done in school so far, other than recess?
Lunch.
Lunch? Recess and lunch and fire are usually the top.
I guess, I guess that'll work.
Can't think, huh?
You guys probably haven't been on any field trips, I bet, this year.
No, we haven't.
Where are you going?
I don't know yet.
They don't even know yet.
Oh.
So kindergarten does local field trips. They go to Gus Davis, they go to the police station, the fire station. First grade is going to play in New Ulm. Oh, fun. That's a fun play. Have fun.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
I tell all the students and their families, they're not, they're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but they're not required. Thank you very much for coming. We'll move on to action items. This first one is pretty exciting. It's a resolution to consider for approving bond refinancing. Superintendent Gronseth.
Yes, this is a process that we have been working on for quite a while. We started conversations about it last year and have been watching the market, watching for the right opportunity. Last month, you took an action approving us to move forward. And this month, we are here with some pretty impressive results that Mr. Hoheisel can share with us. You do have a handout that I put at your space, this long colorful one with exciting numbers on it.
So about a week and a half ago, good evening all. About a week and a half ago, Superintendent Gronseth probably sent out a refinancing package. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details. What we're gonna do is make it as tiny and unreadable as possible in one sheet in front of you.
Perfect.
Tonight, we're asking you to ratify the bond purchase agreement that will lock in $8,027,000 of the savings with the refinancing of the 215A bonds. Now, I was gonna try to do a fun teaching moment. I was gonna fold this in three pieces and send, and give it to you and have you fold it with me. But we abandoned that because I wanted to make it a little easier on the bottom. So how this is set up, folks, is in the left-hand segment, so it's in three segments. The left-hand segment or grouping is your original 2015 bonds. The part in the white, in the upper left-hand corner, is the non-callable portion. Down in the black with the white font on the lower portion, there is a figure on the very bottom that says approximately $65 million. That's how much you have left to pay on those bonds past the white. What we were able to do is, Baird was able to act as placement agent with JP Morgan, and we went and got basically a bank loan to refinance your issuance. What that bank, what getting that bank loan did for you, for instance, was that this package totally came in about a 2.68% true interest cost. That would be, when I say true interest cost in our language, that's your mortgage rate. Whiteboro Lake Schools sold bonds the following Monday after we locked this in Thursday afternoon and Friday. They sold one year longer, and I believe they were $63 million. They sold a total tax-exempt issue at a 289. So this 268 has three years of taxable. So we go from here to here, the first three years is taxable, and then when the bonds can be called after that white, they move to a tax-exempt rate, a conversion rate. So if you were to look at the bottom in the black and the white, you'll see in the middle column, you'll see in the middle column the savings with the convert, savings without the conversion. If you were just to stop at that step, it would've been $6.3 million with the savings. There's an additional action that will be taking place in, between November and February of 2025. That will convert these bond, the paperwork will be done, it'll be turned in to the IRS. That will convert these bonds to a tax-exempt rates. Those tax-exempt rates are locked in that third segment. And so we went from $65 million of the payments to $59 million payments to 57.6, an additional 1.6. Take that 1.6 plus the 6.3, there's your 8,250, and we have to sell bonds and 5,000 increments. So we have 2,000 rounding that gets put there for a total savings of $8,270,000. So quite, quite exceeded expectations. That, I believe, is pretty close to a 12% net present value. That's four times in the, that's four times higher than the minimum state. And so that minimum state would've been about 1.4 to 1.6 million dollars. So by us, by us getting a pretty neat bid from JP Morgan Chase, we were able to, as Bill knows, Tim was, Tim was on the phone since Bill was with us at MAS. I wasn't the nicest person by Thursday after a whole week of negotiations. I said, they called and said, your attorney said we have some problems. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get it done that week. And I said, we have three items of language that has problems. There isn't one thing that I even, even think needs to be changed. We just want clarification so I don't put the district in danger of a technical default. I said, we want to know exactly what needs to be reported on an annual basis from you, JP Morgan Chase, you'd be satisfied on. I said, each one of these three paragraphs. Oh, well, that's not what the attorneys are talking about. And so my young analyst got back to me and said, I don't know if JP Morgan really appreciated the fire you just lit. This will be interesting. And I showed Bill that up at the conference at MAS, and I said, well, we'll see what happens then. And they, the fire got lit, and we moved a bank loan pretty darned quick. So just fabulous news. As you all know, the market in our world, and if you're trying to borrow money right now, is running away with events that happened on the Saudi oil fields today. Our market went up 10 to 15 basis points, or 10 basis points is one tenth of a percent. So they're going the wrong way, but we were able to lock this in. And this is just, this is just a wonderful piece to be able to bring to you to say, hey, thanks for putting trust in us, and I'm really ecstatic to be able to hear this news.
Thank you very much. And fun fact is, the amount that is saved per taxpayer is greater than the amount that we passed with the referendum.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's saying something.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. Just so everyone is clear, that $8 million is taxpayer money. District with your help is saving. And like you just said, it's like the referendum that just passed, right? It's costing zero.
Now, in the future, the rate does continue to go up, but we've restructured those payments. So we've talked about the cliff for quite a while. The cliff is gone now. It's more of a steady incline.
It's a steady incline.
And with the growth that's predicted or projected for the city, you know, we've all, we all see buildings going up and houses going up, which increases our tax base, which decreases that amount that each taxpayer pays. So over time, even though that amount is increasing, our hope is that growth continues with it so that that increase on the individual taxpayer stays pretty modest. And it gives us room to address some of the other needs that we've been talking about without being unreasonably high.
I was just thinking about the over $8 million, so forgive me if you said this, but we're also, we shaved two years off, correct?
Yes, yes, we finished two years sooner as well. So I've just been very appreciative of Mr. Hoheisel's help and assistance and knowledge when he says something, and I look at him like, what? He's very good at drawing pictures and graphs and explaining things to us to help us along. Very appreciative.
Is there any initial discussion?
I don't have any questions.
With, with that, I would... Oh yeah, I can introduce the resolution. It's 14 pages long, so I know the principal Doherty wants me to read all 14 pages, but I'm not going to. There is a copy in the, in the back, and we will have that at the district. But I will read the, the opening statement. "The resolution of the School Board of Independent School District Number 508, St. Peter Public Schools, State of Minnesota. The district approving the sale of the district's general obligation, School Building Refunding Bonds Series 2022A, known as the Bonds, to the purchaser thereof, determining the form and details of such bonds, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration of such bonds, providing for the payment of and the security for such bonds, and authorizing and ratifying certain other documents and actions in connections therewith, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 508, State of Minnesota." And then 14 more pages.
So is this where you look for someone to move the resolution?
Yes, that would be amazing.
Kind of proud of myself. That's what I wanna do.
Awesome.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the resolution. We will, we will go ahead and do that.
Aye.
Leonard, aye.
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 Resolution carries unanimously. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Wonderful evening. Job well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome.
Have a good trip back.
It'll get colder. We will move on to action item number two. Consider updating signers on First National account to, the signers being Tim Regner and Bill Gronseth. Superintendent Gronseth, do you wanna fill us in on why this action is needed?
Sure. This is an account that has been in place for 35 or 40 years. Back when the all-night graduation parties started, things were handled a little bit differently than they are now. And so this account is in the school district's name and should be connected to the nonprofit associated with the all-night grad party. So we worked with the original folks who set it up, who happened to work at the... And by putting our names on it, we should be in better alignment with modern accounting laws, I'll call them. And there is a nonprofit, as I mentioned, that is associated with the all-night grad party. The understanding is that $1,000 a year over the next seven years will go to the nonprofit to support the all-night grad party over time. And so by putting our signatures on the account, it just better aligns our accounting practices.
Just on a side note, I'm fairly certain that the all-night graduation party started in 1986.
What year did you graduate?
That would be 1986.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
I was worried you were gonna say...
You threw a party 'cause you made it?
Yeah.
Intercepting plans perhaps?
I was worried you were gonna say you graduated in 85, hence the need for the...
I totally thought that's what it was.
Eighty-six. Pretty sure.
Pretty sure.
Is that 35 or...?
Thirty-five, thirty-six, yep.
Well, I'll make a motion to update the signers on the First National Bank to Tim Regner and Bill Gronseth.
I'll let you second it, Tim.
Second. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. And is this, I just was making sure that this is not a resolution. Regular. Any further discussion? Page 52.
Yeah, but usually our resolution is to change a signer.
Awesome. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to the 2123 Master Agreement with Office Support. Superintendent Gronseth or Tim?
All right. The Negotiations Committee met over the course of several months with the Office Support, working to reach an agreement, and that was recently done. The unit has voted to approve the tentative agreement, and so it is coming to you for final approval. Really, with this, with this bargaining unit, much like we were with the parent professionals, we were looking to do market adjustment with this group to get their salaries up to comparable levels with other organizations, other school districts. And so in the first year, it's $1.50 that is applied to all salaries on the steps. And then the second year is a 3% increase. And then the career increments, so those folks who have been with us longer have an additional 50 cent increase on their steps in their career longevity paid. And then with the standards program, that is where the Office Support can take additional training and receive additional increases in their wage. That topped out after eight years. It's been eight years since it started. And so there was a ninth year and a 10th year to complete that cycle. And then the insurance cap was increased to $13,500 for the Office Support. And there were, there were a few other just language changes. And one of the items that we've been doing in most of the contracts is child leave language. And so we updated that in, in this contract as well. Anything to add?
No, I just, Chair Leonard, rest of the board, I'd like to thank the Human Resource Committee, Bill and Drew, and Superintendent Gronseth, Teve, and all the others that are involved in it. And I'd also like to thank the Office Support Group. I think they were good meetings, and they were done in a good way. So I would like to make a motion to approve the 21 through 23 Master Agreement with the Office Support.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to another set of contracts with the Master Agreement 2123 with Principals.
Yes, we had some good meetings with the Principals bargaining unit as well. And I was working with the Chair of the Negotiations Committee or Human Resources Committee, as it is now called, with Chair Locan Skard on this. And the Principals bargaining unit has salary increases of 3% and 3%. There were some adjustments in language. The Principals contract has 240 days, and some parts of the contract referred to 235 days. So that was increased to the 240 so that there was alignment there. Personal day accumulation changed from four days to five days. This is in line with other bargaining units. And then there was an increase in the retirement. Sick pay increased from $40 per day to $50 per day for the up to 240 days. That too is in alignment with other bargaining unit contracts. I know sometimes we tend to look at percentages and say, boy, they got a higher percentage than another group. But Principal contracts do not have lanes and steps, does not have those annual increases like the other bargaining units do. So when you're looking at total cost of an increase for a unit, you have to keep in mind what is already in place. That just happens as people gain more experience, so. I think that's it, unless there's questions on that.
I don't have any questions. Initial question?
I move that we accept the 21 through 23 Master Agreement with Principals.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation?
I did wanna add one thing. We did add the Principal of Alternative Programs to be included in this contract. Currently, Janet Sikora is in that position as an independent contract while we are in negotiations with the Principal contract, and so now is included in this contract for starting next year.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That is the end of our action items. We have one information item about our upcoming meeting Thursday.
That's right. This, the Shared Programs Committee met with a subcommittee of the City Council. I'm, I was trying to think when that was. It was...
It was a little while ago.
Like in the fall. And we were having conversations about a joint meeting. There were seats open on both bodies, and so it was decided to wait until after the election and after new members were seated and let them settle in a bit were there. And so now that meeting is scheduled for this week. This agenda was discussed by those subcommittees when they got together, and then Todd Pravky and myself meet once a month, sometimes more, and as topics come up, we discuss them as well. So, the agenda for Thursday is listed here.
Great. Well, I'm really looking forward to that meeting. This is something that we had done in the past, but I think we got away from it, and then the pandemic hit, so it's... Chair Loken Skard, you like five years since we've done this?
And that meeting is here?
Yep. They hold it here, and they'll, they'll move the tables, so it's more of a big square.
Circle, square.
And then you, you intermix.
Yes.
I think this is a really good idea. Collaboration.
It's been a while, though.
Yeah.
I mean, since that last one.
Well, and too, I mean, we, we have new members that haven't met with them before, and they have new members who we haven't met with, so. Very good. Opportunity. Great reports.
Hello again, and I am on, we've kind of made it whoever has the spotlight students, then you are also the reporter for the team. So, we'll start with early childhood. They're excited that the weather has warmed up so that they can go outside for some of their large motor activity out in their playground, get a little fresh air. They also have early childhood screening going on in the Early Childhood Center on April 7th. So, if people have not yet registered for that or need to have their child screened, they can call the Early Childhood Office and they'll set them up with that. Just a reminder that screening is required for all children prior to kindergarten. The Early Childhood Center has been planning and preparing for spring events and for fall programming. And again, if parents are interested in signing their students up for those programs, they can just call the Early Childhood Office and they'll assist them with that process. Moving on to South, we held, last time you had your school board meeting, we were holding a sneak peek kindergarten night, and we used a different format, and we really received a lot of positive comments back from parents who have done the sit-in-the-gym, with separate the parents from the students, style. And then this year, we did a self-guided tour, and we had staff members throughout the building to share a little bit about what the different areas were that we were trying to highlight. And we had a wonderful turnout, and we were able to get a few registrations in that evening, and they've slowly been trickling in since then. So, again, if anyone needs assistance in registering their students, all they need to do is call South, and if you need an interpreter, we'll also help facilitate that for you so that we can get a good idea of what our staffing needs will be for next year. Last Monday night, we held our first parent council meeting in over two years, and we had a very nice crowd, and everyone was so excited to get involved. So, they jumped right on board, and we have several activities that are already scheduled for the remaining quarter of our school year. This Friday, we'll be celebrating our end of the year, our end of the third quarter school-wide celebration. We'll have the Rad Zoo, and if you don't know about the Rad Zoo, they bring lots and lots of reptiles, and the students get the opportunity to learn more about them, even touch a few of them if they'd like. And we do have a book fair going on right now. It will be open to the public on Thursday. We have our first night of in-person conferences on Thursday, so it, it runs at the same time. So, anytime from 3:30 to 7:30 on Thursday, you can swing by the South Media Center, and there's, there's a book for everyone. So, it's a wonderful way for our classrooms. We earn points to purchase books then from the, from the book fair, and also get books into the hands of students at home. At North Elementary, they had approximately 40 students in the third and fourth grade that attended the Young Writers and Artists Conference at the Bethany College that was held on March 9th. And Mr. Doherty wanted to let all the parents know that the third quarter report cards will be mailed out on the 25th, but they can go on infinite, parents can go on infinite campus on March 23rd. Parent, teacher conferences will start for not only South, but North and early childhood, or excuse me, middle school as well, starting this Thursday for all K-8 families. The annual North Elementary Arts and Academic Night was held on March 10th from 5 until 7, and they had about 100 students that volunteered their time and talent through the science fair projects, hobbies on display, students performing talents, and they also had artwork. Aiden Abel was the spelling bee champion. There were also about 500 community members in attendance, so they brought in a lot of people to showcase some of the great things going on at North. On the district level, our state-required testing season has started, and the access assessments for our English language learners in grades K to 12 have now been completed. MCAs and MTAS will have started, have started at the middle school. We will have preliminary results for the access at the end of May. Hopefully, June or July, we'll be able to get the final results. Middle School had a theater production of Treasure Island on March 4th and 5th. There were 60 students that participated in the cast or crew, and roughly 500 tickets were sold for that event. The High School Student Project for Teens visited the sixth-grade health classes on March 9th and 10th, and the students presented the topic, their topic of focus was bullying. Topics included the difference between being a bystander and an upstander. Fifth and Sixth Math Masters completed, competed at the Bethany Lutheran College on March 11th as well. The first round of MCA assessments are wrapping up. Last week, the seventh graders took the MCA reading test, and the eighth graders took the math and science assessment. The remainder of the assessments will be given in late April and early May. Mrs. Engeldinger is not here, so we do not have an update. She was gone today, so we didn't get her, her update in. But the alternative programs, we have the credit recovery program is halfway through a third session of night school, and is taking reservations for the final session, which will start April 25th. They're still working out the details for summer recovery program. Thank you to Mark Bachman and his team for supporting the facility adjustments at Hoffman Learning Center to meet the needs of the residential students. One example of this was the installation of new doorknobs and locks that took place today. Rock Bend ALC will have openings for the 2022-23 school year as a result of several students graduating in May. They're currently accepting interest forms from high school students who may have an interest in attending Rock Bend next year. And that's a wrap. Any questions? And we will make sure Mrs. Engeldinger's session part is twice as long next month, okay? Guaranteed.
She's the one to ask, come on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. I like your thinking.
Thank you. It's my turn. Well, I know that Principal Engeldinger would have spoken about everything that's been going on surrounding the high school right now. If you've seen news reports and articles in regards to the situation around the basketball team, you know that there's been a lot of support for the school and for the team and for Alex personally. And we can be so proud of how everyone has responded in this situation. It's a good reminder that we live in a community that really, where we strive to honor and value and respect all people. And it's because that is what we strive to be. It's, it doesn't happen by mistake. There are many groups in our community that work all the time, including the school district, to make sure that we provide workshops and trainings and open conversations and outreach efforts in order to create a more equitable and accepting community. However, it's a good reminder to all of us that speaking up matters, that, I know that right here in our community, there are things that are said and things that are done that don't reflect that same level of acceptance that we would hope for. And it's up to all of us to speak up when we hear something or experience something or see something that's hurtful or discriminating or harassing. And sometimes it's because we, we don't realize that it's hurtful, because we might not know the history or the meaning behind them. And sharing information, sharing our stories, learning more about each other and our cultures and our histories will help us to continue to avoid situations like this in the future. So, we as St. Peter's Schools really strive to create a safe and welcoming environment for everyone, and will continue to review our processes and our procedures and our curriculum and our teaching strategies to continue to make improvements in this area. By no means are we perfect, and this is a long learning journey, a lifelong learning journey for all of us as we continue to seek to know more about our neighbors and to be as supportive as we possibly can. And that's, it's true here in St. Peter, but it's also true across the state and across the country. So many of these conversations are happening. And here's to continuing to work to live in harmony together with those we agree with and those we don't agree with from all cultures and religions and backgrounds. So, I'm just really proud of how our staff and our students and our community have responded to this situation.
Thank you so much. Move on to board members around the table. Chair Loken Skard.
I don't have anything.
Director Stewie?
I just want to say, you know, that I was very saddened by what happened as well. And I think as our student athletes go out, and as coaches and as teachers, we have to remember that there's always a lot of good eggs in that basket, too. And so, to remember that. And it's really easy to say a certain town really stinks, but really, it can be very hurtful if you're over there and you are doing the right thing. And I know that there is a whole lot more percentage of those people doing the right thing. It's just the bad behavior just kind of gets them attention. So, if there's somebody from Nuam watching this, we don't hate Nuam. You know, it's just, it's just what it is, so. And I'm sad it happened. I'm not at all upset. I mean, yeah, anyways, just, there's a lot of people.
Absolutely.
I don't have anything. Director Martins?
I would just like to say that, thank you for the comments, and I do think that it would, it's good that this focus stays here because this is not the only kind of incident or situation that exists. And if we keep looking, we're going to find things that are going to make us a better community all the way around. And I'm looking forward to that part of the city and the district meeting, too. So, thank you.
I have a couple of things. A week ago Wednesday, I think it was, I attended the FFA luncheon and career fair, and was very impressed with that activity, and the food was delicious. Sure has changed since I taught up there. That's all I have to say. I don't remember getting prime rib for lunch, but it was good. And then last Friday, the St. Peter Ed Foundation Board met for the first time in a long, long time, and they're trying to resurrect the committee and get it more active, both in fundraising and then awarding grants. There were two grants that were brought forth to the committee, and it was decided, because they both were written over a year ago, but then COVID shut everything down, so that they were going to return it to the individuals that wrote it to make sure the need was still there, whether or not they needed to refine it or anything like that. So, I know one was at North, I think, so I don't know if you've gotten it back yet, but that's...
I've got it.
Yeah. That's what... So, that was that. And as far as the legislature goes, things are getting rather hectic this week. This is, Friday is the first deadline where bills have to have been heard in order to be considered. So, Billy, you probably have more things to say about that, but...
No, it's, you know, it's, it's common, this, about this time, things start to turn more inward, and we get a little less information as things are being crammed into the end. I have heard they're not sure if there's going to be an omnibus bill at the end. We've heard that before, and there always seems to be one, so I don't know. We'll, we'll see what happens. There's a lot of moving parts this year, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Did you get a total count of bills that were introduced?
I haven't.
I haven't seen it, but it's, yeah, enormous.
One that has been heard in both houses is the raising the amount that board members can make working for the district outside of school board work. So, I think they're fairly optimistic that that will pass on its own. But other than that, there's a whole wide variety of things. And I was not able to listen to the chat room on Friday, so I was just replaying it before I came. Kim Lewis was giving the information, and she was going through that so fast, my head was spinning. Denise always identifies the bill by the House or Senate file number, and that at least makes it easy to follow. So, I'll have to go back and listen to it a couple times. We'll try and get a summary of that to you. I have grandkids staying, so.
Oh, I understand it. Thank you.
I'm curious. So, I'm kind of curious with that, this raising the amount the school board members can make. Like, do they really, I mean, is that going to solve a big problem? I mean, I mean-
Probably not for a school our size, but for some of the smaller schools.
Okay.
It will make a big difference. They're having a hard time finding coaches, especially junior high or middle school coaches, substitute bus drivers, those types of things, so.
Because what's the amount now?
Eight thousand. Is it eight?
So...
And they're going to raise it to 20.
If I could coach a couple seasons, a couple sports, it might still be okay.
I think there are, there are some districts where board members might be serving as a bus driver or a substitute or a coach, and so it's, it's usually a combination of things.
Got it.
If you're event workers, if they're ticket takers, it, it gets up there pretty quickly if you're doing a few of those things.
Especially if you were substituting and there was a long-term position that you were qualified for, and they're having a hard time. Eight thousand doesn't go real far.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Upcoming meetings of the school board, we have a joint meeting with the city that we talked about on Thursday in this room at 5:30. We have a policy committee on Wednesday, March 30th at 4:00 PM in the St. Peter Middle School conference room. We have an education committee on Tuesday, April 5th at 1:00 PM in that same middle school conference room, and then a business committee scheduled for Wednesday, April 6th at 4:00 PM. And that's in the media center at the middle school.
Those are some beefy agendas, too, so.
Then our next regular school board meeting is Monday, April 18th at 6:30 in this room. So, with that, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It's here. Sarah brings it every time, and I-